And we'll ask our board member, Mr. Coliani, to lead us in the pledge today.
... My pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we should have the National Anthem. Bonnie, or no, Susan Singer.
Singer.
Yeah.
Sing the National Anthem for us sometime rather than the Pledge of Allegiance?
She's a good singer.
Maybe.
Alrighty.
That wasn't a no.
That's the key, Ray. Alright, let's go to roll call.
Dan Booker Jr., Eric Whittington, Sue Mayberry, Danny Loesch, Scott Schwab, Bonnie Donaldson.
Alright, report to standing committees.
Public service met tonight at 6:30 to watch the mayor sort his trash. We discussed the trash aggregate program and the recycling issues that we've had. There was some discussion about possibly moving to bi-weekly recycle pickup, but no decisions were made. That's all.
Alright, thank you, sir. Moving on to citizens' comments for agenda matters.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a, I would like to make a comment on the agenda.
Yes.
At the last council meeting, Resolution 2618, an agreement with Environmental Design Group to develop the Canal Fulton Community Park Master Plan, had its third reading. Prior to the reading, Councilman Whittington was excused to leave the meeting early and was not present when the vote was taken, leaving five members of council to vote on the remaining issues at hand. The resolution failed three to two, as it takes four votes in the affirmative to pass. Now there's new legislation on tonight's agenda for a first reading, Resolution 219. This legislation is an amended agreement with the same firm, Environmental Design Group, to develop the Canal Fulton Community Park Master Plan. This new legislation, Resolution 219, contains the same intent as the one that failed at the last meeting. However, it has been tweaked by eliminating a coordination meeting with the city and a $500 cost reduction. Who in the city sought to amend EDG's proposal and why?
I was part of that, Sue, and I think Mark communicated with EDG to ask them.
And then, and then, Council President, Mr. Booker, too.
So he contacted EDG, triggering their minute changes to the proposal. Are we now in the business of negotiating terms after council speaks until we get the outcome desired? I do not support this maneuver to revisit this proposal and obtain this time the votes necessary to pass. And is there anyone at this table tonight that is going to ask for a suspension of the rules and passage by emergency tonight of Resolution 219?
I'm gonna recommend the council suspend the rules, but not to pass it on your...
That's all I, that's all I have. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, alright. And Dan, did you want to adjust the, amend the agenda to have Sister Cities present there?
Do you want to wait?
We can wait.
Sure, alright. There we go. Thank you. Alright, moving on to correcting and adopting the record of proceedings.
I make the motion to adopt the Record of Proceedings of February 5th, 2019.
Okay, we have a motion by Sue Mayberry, seconded by Scott Schwab. Any discussion?
Um, there's a couple of things. On the first page, under roll call, I believe there were some people that were not in attendance. Like, I don't think Tim Schetzer was there on February 5th. There's just some people that I don't believe were there, or might have been there, that weren't listed on that. Um, let me see.
I have one thing, too, but I find...
Um, I mean, they were very, they were very good, they were very good meeting minutes. Wait a minute, am I on the right one? You're on the 5th. I'm sorry. No, there is, yeah, that issue about the being present, that is an issue on this one plus the other, other set of minutes. But other than that, I have no problem with the 5th. I'm sorry.
So do we just need to amend the attendance?
Yeah, well, whoever signed in or whoever was there, I'm not sure. I can't remember.
What about something like on the Record of Ordinances? There was something, hm?
We didn't have anything in the 5th. This is the 5th. This is just the 5th.
And this was what we got, the whole packet we had. This is part of it, is what I have. That's what I was just asking, because she shouldn't be here anymore. It still has Teresa's name on here.
Okay.
It's just...
And that's on an ordinance, okay.
That's what I said, it was on the ordinance.
And what it was, was that, I think that was originated when Teresa was still here.
I'm sure it was, but I just thought, she's not...
Yep.
Now we have Alyssa, so...
So Mayor, that's all I have for the 5th.
Alrighty. Any discussion? Roll call.
Scott Schwab.
Yes.
Danny Loesch.
Yes.
Sue Mayberry.
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.
Yes.
Eric Whittington.
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson. Yes. And I make the motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting on February 5th. That was the Committee on Committee meeting. I'm sorry. Yeah. This is the February 5th council meeting minutes that I make the motion to approve.
Alrighty.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion by Sue Mayberry, seconded by Dan Booker Jr. Any discussion?
And the, same with the people in attendance. I believe Mr. Schetzer is on here again, and I don't believe he was there. Another, another, when we, after we excused Mr. Whittington from the meeting, I, and opinion of council, after he left, that left five members. So any time that it states a motion was ma, um, all council members voted yes, I don't want to be confusing to say that all members voted yes when there was only five of them here, but you'd have to be cognizant that a member left.
Gotcha.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay, that's, and there was only one of the... You could say all council members present voted yes, but I, I'm, that's something that I'm not sure about there.
Yeah.
And I think that's all that I had on the minutes for the council meeting.
Alrighty, we'll make those corrections. Uh, roll call.
Scott Schwab.
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson.
Yes.
Danny Loesch.
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.
Yes.
Eric Whittington.
Yes.
Sue Mayberry.
Yes.
Alright, senior citizen, report. I did get a quote in the mail today, and I apologize, I didn't bring it with me. I think it was around $3,700 to replace the back door at the Senior Citizen Center. And we also have a, a bill for rekeying the locks at the senior center for $375 and replacing the panic hardware. I guess my question to council is, we're landlords there, but I really don't think we collect any revenue. So as far as those expenses, would it be council's opinion that the senior center should be responsible for replacing that door? Or is that something that...
That's our building.
It's our building.
Is the door rotted? It's our building, we own it.
Right, right.
Is the door rotted, or...
Uh, it's not closing all the way on its own, so when someone goes in, it stays ajar, and they would like to see it closed properly.
And locks, because if you're changing the door, you have to...
Well, I think it was getting to the point where everybody and their brother had a key to the building, and...
I don't have that.
Is there anything in the lease agreement on it? Would be treated as a...
That's, that's what I'm saying, is, you know, normally, in a tenant landlord relationship, some things are the responsibility of the tenant, some things are responsibility of the landlord.
Yeah, but normally you get rent.
Yes.
Say, hey, we don't get rent.
Right. So that's what I'm looking for from council, is some kind of direction.
We've always paid for their maintenance issues, like air conditioner, roof, heating, toilet fixing. I mean, I know that in the past...
Well, they, I think they bought some new appliances for the kitchen.
Did they get a grant, their own grant, to do that? Or they just...
They had a donation from members, I think.
Well, I mean, it's...
So...
I don't have a problem with council, with paying for it.
Okay.
Because myself, but...
Alright. Other members?
I have a question. That's $3,700.
$3,700.
What's that involved? That's pretty high price.
That's a, that's a steel door.
Did we replace the door?
Yeah. It is, it's quite a project, the way it's basically built into the building, and so...
I thought you said $375.
That was for the locks, which seems high to me, too, but the door itself to replace, and the door that's on there is not insulated, you know, it's not to fire standards, so this would be a significant...
It's insulated steel door.
That's not even a...
Think if somebody sees a city commons?
That's not automatic push button. That's just a straight door.
That's just basically replacing the same kind of door that's on there now, so...
Why is it so expensive?
Um, I don't know, but this is, I've been using this contractor, as well as a lot of other contractors, and this has always been like the least expensive contractor that I've ever gotten a price from, so...
Well, I mean, I just bought an insulated steel door for my house.
Yep.
From Home Depot, it was $200 and some dollars.
Mm-hmm.
They wanted $500 to install it, so I'm doing it myself, because I'm cheap. I don't want to pay $500.
Does the door jam need replacing, everything?
The door, it's the door jam, and so the door jam is basically built into the building itself.
Building itself.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so...
That's sold really high.
Yeah. And, you know, the other contractors I called haven't come really to give us a price yet, so this is...
Have you asked Grant Joyce?
Uh, no, I haven't, so...
I asked him.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look around a little bit, probably before that's triggered.
Alrighty, will do. Alright, and moving on to community service. I don't think we have a report there. Fire chief?
Thank you, Mayor. And once again, I'd like to apologize for not making the meeting February 2nd, but I would have just spread what I had, if you already have it. So I'm probably one of those people on the minutes that was not in attendance as well. Also, just reporting a couple of things. One, our explorers competed in the Winterfest in Gatlinburg, and last year when they went down, they got a third place award for emergency medical services. This year, they got two second place awards, one for tabletop presentation and also one for cardiac arrest management. So we were proud of that, to get them down there and compete with other explorers and bring back a little bit of hardware. Also, our Engine 5 is up at Sensible Products right now, being outfitted with equipment, so when it comes back, it should be pretty close to being put into service after some training. The manufacturer's rep will come down and do some training. We'll also have to have it taken out and laid so that they can establish the tire pressures for the, for the engine, and they'll also put on tire pressure mounting devices on the valve stems. And also, one other thing to report is, our, we've already got our AFG radios from the state fire marshal. These were 100% award from the state fire marshal, but we needed to further complement to outfit our trucks, and those are on the way. I just got serial numbers for the regional grant that we had, and I think that our participation in that cost, and this is just off the top of my head, is about $7,000. It might be a little bit more than that, but those are on the way, and we should have those installed right now. We are operating simply off cordables, and we're finding the coverage really good. The radios have the ability to give you now a service signal, and the only way I've been able so far to get an out-of-service signal is to take the antenna off, go down in the basement of the safety center and stick it up against an earth and wall. That's the only time I've gotten out of service. So our coverage is really good, because there's a hundred radios. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, council may have.
Give us an update on the truck. Is it in service, fully operational yet, or...
It's up at Sensible Products right now. The contractor that's installing the equipment on it, and when it comes back, it'll be pretty much operational, but we'll have some training to do on it. The manufacturer's rep will come and do some training with us on it, because he's a little more familiar with some of the equipment on it and things like that. And then we'll do in-service training with our firefighters, and hopefully in a, in a month or so, probably beginning of April, maybe, maybe sooner, we'll have it in service.
Okay. We're gonna have a christening or anything like that?
Come on down and...
Take it for a ride?
Yeah, we've never, we've never done much of an official christening, so to speak, but, you know, we would be happy to host a little get-together if people come down and see it, and see how it's all up, and walk around and things like that, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Fire service tradition has been to push it into the station.
I was there when the Lawrence Township, that's what they did with the Lawrence Township truck. I didn't push very hard, though. Alright, police chief?
Thanks, Mayor. The only thing I have is a envoy for a couple officers who got wind that a couple guys from Masland and Perry were trying to sell some drugs to our student-age community, and so they picked up the phone and just ordered up some acid, and they said, "Sure," and went and met him and made an exchange and arrested him. And I can say this is the funny part now, because nobody got hurt, but the officer got into the car to make the exchange with the drug dealer, and he's realized he just stopped that guy a week ago on a traffic stop, and the guy never realized it was him, and still made the, made the change, so... And, so, I mean, they were pretty nice. They gave him an extra hit of acid, you know, for their trouble, and, so, but anyway, I'll, I'll, it was a good arrest. The officer took the initiative to go do this, and really risk injury doing stuff like this to protect our, our community, and they did an outstanding job, so... And that's all I have.
Any questions for Chief Schwartz? Alright, turn it over to Mr. Delesky.
Thanks, Mayor. I think the thing I wanted to discuss maybe a little bit more tonight was the White Cloud Project. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, we discussed previously.
Yeah. And this is what, we have a committee meeting in a couple weeks, but I wanted you to have some information going into that meeting, and so I'm gonna ask Keith to explain how the qualifications are determined, so I guess I had the vision of just putting it out to bid, and that's not really the case. If you could explain how that works, where, what we're really getting from them is qualifications, so...
Sure. Obviously, we see that they're the previous contractor for the city, and they've done the preliminary design, and a lot of the background work on this project, and so this is just the enter in the contract for the final design of the project. So that's what we'd like to get after your meeting on the, on the agenda, to get voted on, because obviously OPWC applications are due in September, and it's gonna be a good four-month design process to get the plans complete, and that's what would give us the extra points for the funding side of things to get the grant for the project.
So we have CTI's estimate, or their...
Proposal they submitted.
Their, their proposal. So I guess that's the question that I'd like council to ponder or, you know, talk about tonight, of whether they're comfortable just moving ahead with CTI, continue to work on the, the plan, and, or, I guess that, that's where my comfort level is, but I don't know what you're all thinking, so just throw it out there.
CTI started the program, right?
Mm-hmm. So, and also, we're looking at reimbursement on this, this work, so we would get reimbursed for the...
The grant will be a percentage, right? What we write the grant for, to hopefully recoup as much as possible of what the engineering costs and obviously the construction costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last grant application was 50% match, and I, I guess I would concur with Keith. We've already done the RFQ process with CTI early on, selecting them to go ahead and do the study and do the preliminary engineering for the grant, and this is just finishing it off, so I don't think we really need to go through the qualification process. We've already done that. So just a matter of getting it on the agenda for three years and getting approved. I, I, that's my opinion.
Mr. Falmouth, do you have to weigh in on anything?
I don't have a problem with that. Well, I agree with you, I can answer on this.
How much is their proposal?
I thought it was 138.
Well, I was surveying in there that we can do, that, that'll be under another firm.
Total, total cost, I think, was around 131 for, for everything.
Because of professional services, we don't have to... Yeah, it's okay.
Do we have any of this money budget for this year?
No.
No?
We'll have to adopt the appropriation amendment.
Okay. Bonnie, or Dan, Eric, Sue, anybody have...
This is for the...
Water tower.
The new one that you were thinking about getting?
Yep.
I didn't even know we approved that we were gonna get one.
This is, this is for design, this is for design, not the tower, so...
Yeah. This is to design it.
To design, one that we haven't approved to get yet.
Well, as far as the grant process is concerned, if you want to get a grant to pay for half of it...
You have to tell them what you want.
Yep.
Yeah, the city, well, city council approved the grant application for the tower, and we just missed it by one project. We actually received partial funding. I mean, my recommendation is to go back and get full funding, and with this engineering study intact, we can get the funding we need, that'll put us at the top of the list and for, for points for the grant, so... Twenty was spent, we'll get half of it back, and we can do forward on the water tower project.
I'm good with it.
Eric?
Yes.
Sue?
Fine.
Okay. Alright, so we can forego the big qualification process and just prepare legislation to begin the reading process. So when we have the committee meeting in two weeks, what we'll want to discuss then, I would think is, looking, like you're saying, Bonnie, what's the next step after this, to understand, you know, what, what it is we're trying to do and how we're gonna pay for it.
Exactly.
Yep.
Okay.
Alrighty, super, thank you. Keith, anything else? The community park plan, we're gonna try to go out to bid. I gave Keith a date of March 20th that we're shooting for, and we have a planning commission meeting this Thursday to rezone the, the property. And also wanted to point out that I'm working on a couple contracts here, pro bono work as a realtor for the transfer of the property, and Keith is doing a survey on the property so that the part of land that, the part of the, the park that we're gifting to the YMCA will be, will be able to transfer that property by the end of the month. And as we investigated it, part of the property is still in the township, so there's a little wedge of land that the city owns, but it's in the township. It's like a quarter of an acre. And our first thought was to combine that property with the 3.25 acres of land that we're gifting to the Y for a total of three and a half acres. We were gonna combine the two parcels, but we wouldn't be able to do that and rezone it, because that land is in the township, and we can't rezone land that is in the township. So we're gonna, going to do it as two separate parcels to convey them as a gift to the YMCA. And the YMCA will be responsible for the survey work that Keith's gonna do on that property. The other thing that he's going to do, also want to make council aware and update everybody, is to survey the rest of the remaining parcel. It's very similar to what we do in a vacation scenario, where we're vacating land, where you have to recreate a new plat. And so, once we give this land to YMCA and it's transferred, then we'll have a new parcel, and Keith will survey that parcel and plat it, you know, so that we can use it moving forward to locate the walking trail and make sure that we're within all the setbacks and everything that we need to be. So just want to make council aware of that, so thanks for your work on that. Keith?
Mayor, do you know if we pay property tax on the land that we're donating to the YMCA?
I don't believe we, we pay property tax, nor will the YMCA.
Okay.
Because, obviously, we're a public entity and they're...
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit.
Well, I know, I know that we've had issues with property tax at one time with some of their land, I thought.
It was that land, and I think it was about...
Farming.
The farming, yeah.
Farming, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just want, I just couldn't remember the answer was.
Yep, that's exactly right. Alright. And then, also, we've tried to get some bids on some water line replacements for Ash Street and Tow Path, and the estimates that we've gotten so far have brought us in well under budget, and our goal is to use some of that savings to fund the GIS mapping for, you know, and I, I got the impression from council last time that that was an important project that you wanted to see us make sure we continued with, so we're hoping to be able to do that with the savings from what we budgeted, so... Any other questions for our city engineer? Moving on to street department. They put 11 tons of asphalt down patching last week, and I think it's all gone.
Yeah. No, I noticed it, and I thought, oh, wow. No, it's still there.
Where's the school, it's...
Yeah.
Those buses, I hope they don't blow a tire on some of those whole...
Oh, man, I'll tell you.
Oh, wow.
So, what, you know, our street department's in contact and conversations or discussions with the county, because that road, the county was looking at microsealing it, but it's gonna need some significant repair before it's ready for the microsealing that was done on Erie Avenue, south of town, a couple years ago, so bear with us residents, we're all dodging potholes. And also, I attended the Lawrence Township meeting, and what our street departments are proposing is kinda like a joint road maintenance plan, since we annexed property up on Cherritons Street, and about all but 900 feet of that is now in the city. So the township only has 900 feet to maintain. The same scenario happens on Lafayette, where we own one side of the street and the township basically owns the other. And it's 1,400 feet of linear street. So what the two street departments have worked out, and I compliment them greatly for their cooperation, but what they're asking us to do is, we would be responsible for maintaining the entire section of Cherritons Street, and the township then would be responsible for the entire section of Lafayette, so that, you know, we're not chipping ceiling everything but 900 feet, and they're not chipping ceiling everything except 1,400 feet. So the trustees at township were okay with it, and they wanted me to bring it back to council, and so I'm kinda looking for a voice motion, actually, I am looking for a voice motion to give our street departments the permission to cooperately, cooperately maintain those roads.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Scott Schwab, seconded by Sue Mayberry. Any discussion?
How soon?
Um, this is just be ongoing.
Okay.
So as, you know, our street departments submit their budget for the year and look at what streets are done, and what streets they want to do whenever it's time for that work to be done, that would be the understanding, so...
Okay.
Alright. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Bonnie Donaldson.
Yes.
Sue Mayberry.
Yes.
Eric Whittington.
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.
Yes.
Danny Loesch.
Yes.
Scott Schwab.
Yes.
Alright. And public utilities. Also wanted to mention, we're supposed to get snow tonight, aren't we?
Yeah.
So the snow ban, hopefully everyone's aware of that, and tries to get their vehicle off the street, because it really does help with plowing, and they don't have...
Are we supposed to get a lot?
One to three.
One to three.
One to three.
Yeah. Alrighty. Planning and zoning, they meet on...
Thursday.
Thursday. Finance director.
Thank you, Mayor. I included the January financial statements in the packet. The income tax finished January about the same. In the bill listing, we did a total of $668,000, but $316,000 of that was for the fire engine. Otherwise, January was pretty much the same as always in terms of the finances. Ordinance 419 is up for first reading. This is the ordinance for the clerk's position and salary. I asked that you suspend the rules and pass that tonight so that it can be retroactive I asked that you suspend the rules and pass that tonight so that it can be retroactive to, I think it was February 4th, so she can participate in the payroll this week. And then, just a couple PO explanations. Purchase order 12,024 to Pro-Tech is for, basically the, my understanding of the, this PO is the computer hardware in that lift station has been slowly failing over time and they want to replace it. This was included in the capital budget for this year. And then, purchase order 12,025, the heater at the grit building died again. It's died a couple times in the last few years. And so now they're, basically it's dead at this point, it's just they chalked it up. It's to the corrosive environment and the way that it was installed has made it kind of difficult to do work on it. And so they're using a different vendor here and then they're going to work on essentially changing the installation to do a little more preventative, be able to do more maintenance on it. This one was not in the capital budget, but they're reworking the capital budget to include this and then take, I believe, some of their other miscellaneous repairs out in order to fund it. That's all I have at this time. Glad to answer any questions.
I'll move to approve, we've received the January financials, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Danny Loesch, seconded by Scott Schwab, any discussion?
Does this include the check approvals, is that part of this now or later?
Not yet.
Okay.
No problem Bonnie, I'm right there with you. It's new to me.
There's a lot, and I knew.
Every two weeks, alright. I'm four years in and so, I understand. Roll call?
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson? Yes. Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Alright, city manager?
Yes, I remember the council, several items this evening. Number one, you mentioned rezoning of the park property and that did go before the planning commission last meeting. We initially went in requesting the rezoning of the land we're going to donate to the YMCA. And the planning commission deliberated on the issue and recommended back to us that we rezoned the entire parcel. And we didn't have any confusion on the property. So, so I'm bringing it before city council to see if there's an issue with rezoning that entire parcel. That'd be B1. And if there's not a problem, we can start the legislation and start the rezoning process. Of course, that still involves a public hearing that needs to take place before the zone change can occur. Any questions about?
What's a B1?
A B1 is our lowest level business, so office.
It's still business, okay.
Yeah. Basically, the reason we went to the planning commission for the rezon was for Altman to set up in the new YMCA. Even though it hasn't happened, it may or may not happen, at least with the B1 zone, you can do that. They wanted to have that as their negotiations can hit, continue. But then planning recommended we zoned the entire parcel. So...
And that won't be any problem with doing the park even though it's a B1?
No, no, the park can go.
Okay.
Okay.
So we can initiate that legislation for the next meeting. We'll have three readings and a hearing. Also, I received word that we have another police officer retiring this summer. So the civil service commission is going to meet next week to discuss civil service testing. That meeting will also discuss the promotional test for sergeants. Is that post been made yet?
I, I just got the financial part of it.
Okay.
So, yeah. And do you want me to wait until that meeting to post it to the, to have to certify?
At this point, you might, I was going to, a month ago I would have said no, but at this juncture, you might as well wait till the civil service commission meets in case they have some input. But I mean, we see clearance from our labor consultant to do that posting very quick. So we have a posting for the sergeant's position. And we may or may not need a civil service test for that depending upon how many people apply for two positions. But we will need a civil service test for the replaced, another retiring police officer. If we're going to have, you know, more people and promotion, that's, that's good. Exciting times for us. And talked about the water tower. The only other thing I have is, yes, the, as Sue mentioned earlier, legislation for the park master plan is on the agenda. It's been amended. This is done after I had a conference with the mayor and council president. They both recommended, I go back to EDG and see if they can lower the price. And they did. And so it's back on the agenda and I would recommend that we suspend the rules. And this has been on the agenda for two months now, so.
Well... I thought you were going to check with somebody else on it, that's what we decided at last meeting.
Yeah, I, I never decided to do that in the last meeting. So, I did, well I did get another quote from, from Rodney Meadows, the architect for the Y. And I had that quote also, but when I, when I combined, well, when I reviewed both quotes, EDG had more engineers involved with getting the estimates opposed to landscape architects, which engineering quotes are going to be more accurate, you know. And we need to submit this to ODNR to get to reimburse for the, for the, all the work we're going to do. So I felt we could better notice. And my opinion, EDG is probably the best client firm to do this kind of work. They've done this workforce in the past, they've done work for start parks. They, you know, they're basically, this is what they, so I want the best product we can get to the money and that's my recommendation. And that's all I have.
And I'll give you my thinking on that too. Asking them to, or asking Mark to go back and try and get other bids advertising for them. In my opinion, I don't think it was going to get us better results because these have already been public records since they were put on as a first reading. Any engineering firm that was doing their due diligence and coming up with their plan was going to be able to see what this was and basically could have just based their numbers off of that. And so I just, because I've been going back and forth on whether we should do this. So I guess my question is, what's the alternative to bringing this back and having a vote on it with full council here? We need this master plan or we're basically saying, no thanks, we don't want this grant money. What's the alternative? What else can we do?
Why do we need the master plan right now?
It has to be submitted to the ODNR. From what I understand, when I went down there and met with them, they need it in order, as one of the first pieces before they can start reimbursing us our money.
Mr. Booker, I brought this up, I brought this up a long time ago. The letter came into the city in June of 2018 from ODNR with the attached information to be filled out, June of 2018. It is now February 2019, do the math.
Well, what happened to me in June 2018?
I don't know, what happened?
I had a serious accident and I was off work for a month.
That's a month.
What happened to me in September? Same thing.
Okay, well, alright.
I mean, I was out, I mean, if I wouldn't have had those serious injuries done to my body last year, this probably would have been done. I had this quote in November. But the mayor, in his due diligence, was, we went back and forth, we met several times. I had this, this updated quote since November. That's when I had it. So it just took us that long to get it on the agenda because we met back and forth because of the pricing. And, but here we are today.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? I think we'll get more discussion on that probably when we get to it, so.
I have no more to say on that matter, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Alright, I do want to, I had a note here that, to let council know that our street department went down and picked up our maps from CTI. We're in their file cabinets down there and those are being kept in our workroom out at the maintenance garage, so. And Keith is starting the process to scan those into an electronic form, which will help us also moving forward. Alright, the only thing I have is, just wanted to report to council. I don't know if there's still some note cards out there or not. I met with the third graders from SPJ. Five young men came down and interviewed me in, toward City Hall. So I had some great interaction with them. And also, last week I spent time with a leadership group from the fifth grade at Stinson.
Did he hire you?
No. So...
Did they rule you?
They did, I'll tell you what, they, they were a great audience. So, they had some great questions too, so. Their teacher reminded them, as I introduced you all through your nameplates here, that their teacher used to babysit Mr. Booker and change his diaper.
Wait, who was this?
Mrs. Burke? Parks and Rec, Earl, what do you got for us back there?
Well, the work has started on the Y. We started a day early to get everything out there and had the flags out and everything. Got each equipment out there, they cut the addition to the driveway and today finished it up. But while you did addition, but they got started into it, they finished winding up. I think now it's just a matter of backfilling and getting things straightened up.
Yeah.
But he'll be there for a while.
Yeah, you're keeping an eye on him, keep him in line, Earl.
Somebody's got to keep that guy in line.
Yeah, he's a troublemaker. Alright, thank you, Earl. Alright, law director?
I have your report, the cavity entry question to mayor or council.
Okay. Alright, second readings.
Ordinance 319. An ordinance amending ordinance 3717, rates of pay for safety forces apart. Have employees in repealing any ordinance in conflict therewith.
I make a motion to be suspended rules, this is the Y, right?
No, next one, next one.
Next one, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
I'm okay if you suspend the rules.
No. I'm sorry, wrong.
Everybody wants suspended.
Wrong legislation.
Alrighty, go ahead.
First readings, ordinance 419. An ordinance amending ordinance 4818, rates of pay for non-bargaining employees and repealing any ordinances in conflict therewith.
I make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 419.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Sue Mayberry, seconded by Scott Schwab, any discussion? Roll call?
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Motion to pass ordinance 419 under suspension.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Scott Schwab, seconded by Dan Booker Jr., any discussion? Roll call?
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Ordinance 519. An ordinance amending ordinance 4518 and providing changes to the previously authorized appropriations. Ordinance 619. An ordinance amending ordinance 4518 and providing for changes to previously authorized appropriations. Resolution 219. A resolution by the council of the city of Canal Fulton, Ohio to enter into an amended agreement with environmental design group to develop a Canal Fulton community park master plan.
Move the suspended rules on a resolution 219.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Danny Loesch, seconded by Scott Schwab, any discussion?
I'm going to ask again, are there any alternatives to doing it this way?
I wasn't here when you guys voted on this, I was just curious if there was any reasons. The people that voted now, what were their reasons for?
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah. But I mean, it still has to be done.
And this is, this was my thought. It's like, how soon will the work start on the park? If we approve this now, how soon is it going to get started?
It can start next week.
And how long is it going to take? Because we don't know how much we're going to do. I just don't want to have to do another plan.
Well, no, this is the plan.
No, another one, if we don't get finished in two years and they say, well, we have to have another plan.
Well, if we wait till 2035, it'll only be seventy-five thousand dollars. They might knock a couple thousand off that one. I thought it was that plan.
I'm being kind of serious here.
No, I, Bonnie, and I want to clarify, so when you say, when work's going to get done? Are you saying get done or get started?
I, I said both.
Okay. So, the, the goal is to go out to bid, March 20th. And, and so Keith will prepare the, the bid estimates, you know, the bid specs. And we'll have a pre-bid meeting with contractors, they'll come in and ask questions. Then we'll have a bid opening date and those bids will be opened at that time. And then I would estimate that we'd probably start, you know, construction sometime April, May, hopefully. And then what we want to do with this master plan is, you know, whatever the community's input is that they want to see in that park, you know, like you said, we want to get as much done with this $750,000 as we can. And then we want to go back to ODNR in, in November and tell them, listen, this is what we've got done. Here's our master plan and what our community wants to see in the park. And how much more money will you give us? So, we, we really want to keep the ball rolling here. And we're in a position where, you know, 12, 13 years ago, that was a plan that someone paid, council paid $20,000 for and nothing happened with it. We're in a position now where we can get this plan done and, and we can get going on it.
The reason I asked was just, was there anything else that needed to be done that, that we've talked about that we've requested get done before we vote on this? And I didn't, that's why I'm asking.
I'm just saying, do we have to have 23,000 for a plan to see what the residents want in the park?
Yeah, and that's what EDG will do, is they'll lead us through that process.
Of what, asking them what, what we want?
Yeah, leading the meetings for community input, you know, because I've heard pickleball courts, I've heard a splash park, sled riding hills on there, you know, all different things. And so, really, that's, that's the critical phase.
It just seems like a lot of money to ask our residents what they'd like when there was, I think, easier ways to do it.
Well, it's not just asking them though, it's...
Designing it.
It's them looking at the topography of the property and saying, here's what makes sense based on the feedback they get from them. I mean, we could sit here for hours and ask people and they could say, we want a splash pad. We'd say, done, splash pad, and then it turns out we can't because we're not the experts. You have to pay the experts the money.
Plus, we're going to cost estimates of what it's going to cost us. That, that's, that's going to take, that's where the engineers come in. That's where you're getting your bang for your buck. We'll know exactly what it's going to cost us to build this park so we can go and ask for more grant money. And we'll probably have this thing built in two or three years. I mean, we're getting free money from the federal, through the state for this. I mean, why, why turn it down? Because that 23, we'll get that 23,000 back. That's going to be reimbursed back to us for the grant. So, we're going to spend the money and get it back. So it's really free. It's all free, really.
That's, that's the part that I wasn't grasping, Bonnie.
That's the part I never heard before.
I would say that's all 100% reimbursed from the, from the grant. We'll get it right back, it's free money. See, that's what ODNR is asking us for, to get the money.
Alright, we're still on suspension, discussion. And roll call?
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
What is this for?
Suspend the rules.
Oh, no.
Danny Loesch?
We've already...
No, no, we haven't, no.
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
No.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Okay.
Move the pass resolution 219.
Second.
We have a motion by Danny Loesch, seconded by Scott Schwab, any discussion that we haven't already had?
So, I mean, I still, I need an answer to my question, if there was an alternative to doing it this way. So, is that, does that mean the answer is no? That this is the only way we get this master plan approved?
I think it's fair to bring it back up since Mr. Whittington didn't have the option to vote on it last time.
And I agree with that.
If it dies this time, then we will have to go back out to rebid.
Yeah. And this is still my pet peeve, although my two cents worth and it did amaze me in our charter that if the vote would have been three to three, I can cast a fourth vote. But the vote was three to two.
Three to four and...
And I can't, and other communities would just use a simple majority at that point and pass it three to two. So, as we look at their charter next year, hopefully...
It takes four votes to approve legislation, Mayor.
Yeah, and that's according to our charter, right?
But, really, really... Really, really, even to suspend the rules according to the Ohio Vice Code, it takes five.
Okay.
And we don't even do that.
Okay. So that's, that's my question is, what's the difference between me casting the vote when it's three to three and it's tied, and when it's three to two and I can't vote? That's what I don't understand.
Because it's not a tie.
They changed the ruling two years, about four years ago, actually.
Uh huh.
We could do it before that time, but...
Now it would require us to change the charter... Now, it would require us to change the charter?
The charter's more lax than the Ohio Vice Code, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the charter basically says that the majority of all members have to pass legislation which requires a vote of four, needs four votes.
Okay. Alright, so I'm not a voter unless it's three to two.
A tie, a tie.
That's what the Charter Commission felt was the best for this community, Mayor.
So, did we need five to suspend?
No, not now.
Not now, no, not necessarily. Four to two is a supermajority. Go ahead, bro, then we can discuss this further.
Alright.
It's not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Alright, rule call?
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
No.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
No.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Alright, moving into POs.
First one's tabled. We can leave it tabled. Again, we'll have our committee meeting next, Council, in two weeks, and we can discuss it. Purchase order number eleven thousand nine fifty-one, Core Main LP, in the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents for the handheld device and software support for the automated meter reading project. Purchase order number twelve thousand twenty to Civ Pro Engineering in the amount of ten thousand three hundred for engineering site plan and field survey of the Canal Fulton Community Park Project. Motion to approve PO one-two-zero-two-zero to Civ Pro Engineering in the amount of ten thousand three hundred.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Dan Booker Jr., second by Scott Schwab. Any discussion? Rule call?
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Purchase order number twelve thousand twenty-four to Protech Systems Group in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred forty for the lift station key, replacing the old failing bubbler system with the new panel and installing SCADA software.
Motion to approve PO one-two-zero-two-four to Protech Systems in the amount of twelve thousand seven hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sue Mayberry, second by Dan Booker Jr. Any discussion? Rule call?
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Purchase order number twelve thousand twenty-five to Crescent's Cooling and Heating in the amount of twelve thou, or ten thousand four hundred for the Indaco Heater for the wastewater plant and fluent building.
Motion to pass purchase order one-two-zero-two-five to Crescent's Cooling and Heating in the amount of ten thousand four hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Sue Mayberry, second by Dan Booker Jr. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would ask Keith, are your people capable of reviewing this installation? Are you on that, do you have anybody on that level?
With the inspection of it?
Yeah, and the reason being, because, you know, we heard the last time it was installed, you know, obviously, it was an oversight. Someone really didn't take a look at the issues that would have been in it. Right, compatibility and in the, you know what I mean, accessibility and the things, the issues that we just witnessed from the last installation. I was just wondering if you guys were.
Yeah, and also, I'll follow Bill Dorment on that too, from their previous experience with the equipment, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Rule call?
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
The January bills were included in your packet. They totaled six hundred sixty-eight thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Motion to receive the January bills. Second.
We have motion by Scott Schwab, seconded by Danny Loesch. Any discussion? Rule call?
Danny Loesch?
Yes.
Dan Booker Jr.?
Yes.
Scott Schwab?
Yes.
Sue Mayberry?
Yes.
Bonnie Donaldson?
Yes.
Eric Whittington?
Yes.
Okay, old, new, other business?
Yes, Mayor, as we pass legislation tonight to bring, for Alyssa's position, and I need to go back and revisit the minutes of the council meeting on February fifth, after we came out of executive session regarding,
Appointment?
The full, the full vote of appointment of Alyssa. That actually should be listed after returning to a public session that we made that choice, that decision, and it's not there. That just, that just puts her in that position as of that date.
Okay.
Well, the Monday before, but it needs to be in there.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's all I have.
So, you're looking to amend that in the minutes?
Yeah, I forgot about that earlier, and that should, that should be in there.
Alrighty, okay, we'll do. Mr. Booker?
Alright, I got two things tonight. The first, I am going to be out of town next week. My wife's having some surgery done in Washington DC, so I will not be able to attend the fire district meeting that we had scheduled for February twenty-eighth. I know the township trustees had said that if full council was not in attendance, they would walk out. They don't wanna do this unless everyone's there, so I had a discussion with Les Camp, and he agrees that we should reschedule. So, we just need to find another date if everybody's okay with that.
Did they have a date in mind?
He didn't give me one.
We talked a little bit about that, and did we decide we were gonna go ahead with everybody there again? We didn't accomplish much as much as the last time when we tried that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did talk to the trustee, and he felt that you got a lot of stuff out of the way this last meeting, and that we'll be able to get down to business the next meeting, so. Keep the faith.
Okay, so, I'll reach out to them and touch base and see what dates are available. Is there any, that Thursday, or Thursday evenings good for us?
What week?
We don't know yet, probably.
I just know I'll be out of town the week of, well, next week, and.
What are the dates?
So, the twenty-sixth through March first, and then I will be out again the eleventh through probably the fourteenth. I don't think I would make it back in time if we wanted to do it on the fourteenth. So, be it the seventh, or if we wanna push it back to the twenty-first.
Let's look at March seventh, see if I can, if that works for them.
I know one of the trustees is gonna be out until the end, at least till the end of March, so.
Okay.
I guess we're probably looking at.
Alright, I'll touch base with them and get back to it.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
And my second thing, we had a girl, how's your last name?
Futrell.
Christina Futrell came to a TAP meeting in January to discuss her idea of joining an organization called Sister Cities. Last night, we started forming a committee. I joined the committee. Dave Van Gosbeck is putting it together. And I invited Christina to come tonight and explain what it is and tell everybody what's the plan is right now and what's going on, so. You wanna go ahead?
Should I stand up?
If you want.
Introduce yourself if you would, Christina.
My name is Christina Futrell. I do not work for Sister Cities. I am a resident of Canal Fulton.
Now, what's your address?
Four one three River View Street.
Okay, thank you. That's standard operating procedure.
Okay. Hope I don't get any feet nails.
You get business.
I apologize for those of you who have heard this already, have been to several TAP meetings about it. How many people in Germany or Japan do you think have ever heard of Canal Fulton, Ohio? Probably not a whole lot.
About ten, because I was over there.
There you go.
We hear you're big in Japan.
We can build that number by having a partnership with a sister city in another country. For those of you who are not aware of what a sister city is, I'm just gonna read a brief explanation. When a community of any size or character joins with a community in another nation to learn more about each other and to develop friendly and meaningful exchanges, the two may propose a formal affiliation, leading to official designation as sister cities. The ideal affiliation involves a large number of citizens and organizations in both communities who are engaged in continuing projects of mutual interest. This idea just came to me, and I'm like, wow, this would be a really good idea. Part of the reason why I thought of this idea is when I was in high school, we had German foreign exchange students come to our school. I had several students stay at my house with me, and we had maintained contact and relationship over the years. After I graduated, I went to Germany to visit them. It was, it was a wonderful experience. I've been to school overseas. It was a wonderful experience. So, this idea came to me, and I thought it would be a great idea for Canal Fulton, because we are a small city. I don't know if we're technically a village or.
City.
Okay, a city. But we have so much to offer. We have so much here. We have ice cream shops, and a car dealership, and Clay's Park, and a little amusement park, Sluggers and Putters, and the tow path, and a golf course. Like, we just have a lot to offer. And I think it would be great if we can partner with a city in another country that is similar to us in size, similar, similar maybe cultural things, that we would have some stuff in common, and then things we don't have in common, so we can share those two. And I think it would be a great way to bring economic, to bring tourism to Canal Fulton. It'd be a great way to bring business to our city, not only on a global level, but also publicity in our, you know, surrounding areas. It would be great to do some type of student exchange with the schools, having, you know, like, the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts, you know, in Canal Fulton, connect with a similar organization over there and do cross-cultural exchanges. You never know who's gonna come here and decide, this is a great place, I'm going to invest, I'm gonna build a business here, or, you never know. And for example, you know, the Vice President of China, he was a foreign exchange student when he was young in Iowa. And years later, you know, he becomes the Vice President of China, and when he came to the US on an official capacity, he insisted on visiting his host family in Iowa, because he, they just fostered a really good relationship. And then Iowa also got a really good trade deal, soybean trade deal, out of that relationship that had formed. So, you never know where it's gonna go. You never know what it's gonna lead to. I think it would be great for our city, and it would be great for the partner city that we, you know, decide to go with. So, that's kind of the general idea of a sister city. And then, to, to go forward, where do we go from here, once we decide this is something that, you know, we might wanna do? Is, there's an organization called Sister Cities International, and they're a really good resource. They, they have a lot of toolkits and programs, and just a lot of support and networking for this kind of thing. And to become a member of Sister Cities International is four hundred and forty dollars, which I think is pretty reasonable. And then, once you become a member of them, there's a lot of resources available to us. So, if this is something that the city decides to go forward with, we would fill out the membership application and pay the four hundred and forty dollars. And then, they would pair us up with a city, or we can reach out independently and choose our own city. After that, after we decide on a city, and then we take this idea to that city, and they think it's a good idea too. The council passes a resolution declaring the intent to pair with that specific city. Both mayors or the highest appointed official of both communities sign a formal agreement endorsing the sister city partnership. And then, and then the next step is collaborate with members of our sister city on partnered programs, events, ideas, things like that. So, that's what I wanted to share with you on.
Okay.
We're also going to include Lawrence Township on this, so that we can have the entire area. We're hoping to go to a trustee meeting. I think they meet next week, and I won't be available to go then, but hopefully, in the near future, we'll make it there and explain it to them too.
I like the idea. Think it's a good idea to reach out. It might be known worldwide one day, huh?
We could take them four hundred and forty dollars out of the police budget.
Yeah, we got that.
Alrighty, any other questions for Christina? Thank you very much for getting involved, Christina. It's a great idea. We're excited about it.
Can I pass out just a little bit of information? Unfortunately, I don't have enough for everybody, but all of this information here and more can be found at sistercities.org.
I'll give it to people who haven't pretty much.
Alright, any other questions for Christina? Yeah, I think we're gonna get a lot of volunteers. I think it'd be a good way to get rid of the mayor, if somebody wanted to send me abroad and give me a one-way ticket. Alright, um, alright, let's see, we're moving to report to special committees. Okay, no report, and then we're gonna go to open discussion, five-minute roll for citizens' comments. And judging by the presence of some members here, if you wanna speak, just stand up, give us your name and your address, and. Mr. Parsons, you going first?
I'm going first.
Alrighty.
I live on Erickson Drive.
Address?
Five oh one Erickson Drive. Right up over the hill is the meat package place.
Right.
Trucks run all night long. And I'm not exaggerating, 'cause I'm not that far from them. And I've gone up, sometime ago, I mentioned it, and it went in one ear and out the other ear. And I don't know what to do about it when you're trying to sleep and the trucks are running. Or in the morning, you kind of get to sleep, and they, and they run almost all night, waiting to get their product into the business when they open up at eight, nine o'clock. And I don't know what to say to do about it, but it's a pain.
Yes, and just to let council know, we've met previously with these residents. I've met with them, and, you know, I met with the business owner. And they, I know they've tried, and I've been part of those efforts to reach out to the dispatchers, to let the truckers know that we prefer they park someplace else, rather than adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And it seems to go well for a while, and then, different drivers, different dispatchers, and the message doesn't get conveyed, and we're back here. So, it's an ongoing problem.
Are they independent?
They are independent contractors. They, they get dispatched, and I know the police department's been pretty responsive as far as trying to go up there and asking them to relocate when they're there, and for the most part, they've been pretty cooperative, Chief.
Yeah, they do. And I guess the background in all this is the zoning. It's, this business was, and I'm sure you know this, is they were grandfathered into a certain zoning that allowed the refrigerated units to stand there, and then the houses were built subsequently after that. So, that's why the police can't take, the police cannot get involved and say, you have to do this. We just go and say, may you do this, and help these folks out. So, there's no, so if you wanted to change, the zoning would have to change for us to be able to take enforcement action on it.
Could not the businesses say, don't deliver till nine o'clock?
They can say whatever, but they don't have to say either, you know, so it's up to them.
Right, and once again, you know, that's out of their control, because the trucks get loaded up, and if they're ahead of schedule, they pull into Canal Fulton, and then they have an address where they're going to deliver the product when they open up at five o'clock in the morning. And that's where they go, and, you know, if you all call and let the police know, then, like Doug said, he can make a courtesy call and.
They have, they have made courtesy calls, but it's like, short-term.
Yeah, yeah, we'll keep working on it.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Donna?
I'm also addressing the same issue. I have handouts.
Okay. Can you give us your name and address for the record?
My name is Donna Mateko, and I live at two thousand one Bird Drive. The front two pages.
The house has a really cool backyard.
It is. The one that I can't use on the weekends because the trucks run.
You just have to make your party louder, Donna.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be a homework assignment here?
I am gonna crash one of your parties this summer.
The, what is it, the Halloween party's been the best one to crash. Didn't have that one last week. Didn't have that one last week.
No, just to eat, not. And I don't know how I did it. Okay, so the first two pages are like a brief synopsis of when I first moved into Canal Fulton in 2003. I had a lunatic ex-husband that didn't like noise. So we moved from East Boulevard because there was always a bar letting out at two thirty and it was a ruckus. So when I moved into this city, I specifically went, came down here to check the zoning maps and what it was exactly zoned. B2 is what the map said. So I thought, oh, good, I'll go ahead and buy this house cuz it was lovely, still is lovely. But unfortunately, the trucks started running immediately, immediately. So I thought, well, this isn't good, this can't be, there's own B2. So I went to my builder, Don Schalmo, George Mazerick, we had some discussions and.
George being the property owner, the business owner?
Previous to Jeff Mazerick owning the property. And, well, our maps must have been wrong when you went down and checked because he's zoned industrial. Well, okay, he's zoned industrial. We tried to work it out privately for quite some time, many months. George Mazerick would not budge. He wouldn't put up a fence, he wouldn't ask, he wouldn't put up a sign asking the truckers to leave the premises. Just, I mean, if you turn to your first page, I have March fifteenth, 2005 is when this started. This is when we first came in and had a council meeting of sorts. We were encouraged to come in then. And then the next time, we were encouraged to actually get signatures from the residents. We have signatures, and this was back in March twenty-first, 2005. We have signatures of the entire neighborhood back in Discovery Park. People on Hudson, people on Bird, people on Erickson, people on Millfield across the street, people on Locust, people on Colonial. This is all disruptive to all of those people. But yet George Mazerick still said this, you know, I'm gonna do it my way and that's gonna be the end of it. The next page is a page that the repository wrote and wrote an article about it. And in that article, at the very bottom, and you guys, I only have five minutes, so I gotta go fast. He says that he has no plans to change his practice. On April the fifth, 2005, let's see where I missed here. Mayor Grogan told Chief Kissinger to inform his officers to move the trucks to Route 21 or the truck stop. He told us when there's, there's a truck parked there, we should call it in and they should remove it. On April 2004, April nineteenth, there was a record of proposal ordinance twelve dash zero five. It was, had two readings. The ordinance itself is there on the page and it had two readings. Victor Coliani actually asked us to come in for a meeting as well, as a whole group of residents, and we did that. The second reading came through and George Mazerick still thought about it. And the third reading was stopped because George Mazerick went up Avalon Foods and told Avalon Foods it would affect their operations up on the hill because they constantly have trucks running all the time. The difference between that instance and Avalon Foods is there's no residential properties around Avalon Foods. So it was tabled. And it was tabled, never to be heard from again. And the following month after that, after I had been told by several people in the community, we don't like troublemakers, there was a lawsuit filed against me because I had a small farmer's market on my zoned B2 property and I was selling vegetables and plants. So that was the end of.
But it's zoned business, so.
Correct. And furthermore, there was another tent, this is a whole separate issue, another tent, that Giant Eagle. But yet they wanted to come after me, and that is also included on the last page. My main, my main argument for this is there's own industrial, which is fine. And I have a list of questions for actually the city that I'd like to have at some point answered. They're zoned industrial, I'd like to know what their industrial operation is. They close at five o'clock every day. What are, what are, what is their manufacturing process? What are they, why are they zoned industrial? When did they become zoned industrial? Because according to the books here, nobody can tell me when that ever happened. Like I said, the first map I looked at said zone B2. If they had been zoned industrial, I would not have purchased the property because I had a lunatic ex-husband that didn't like noise, it was simple. So now we've gone through a couple mayors and we've tried to have Joe help us and it just doesn't work. And I'm sure half of you saw the Facebook post that I asked for help and that turned into a debacle. I do want help and I think everybody in my neighborhood wants help with this.
Yes.
Yes.
It's disruptive, I can't even enjoy my own backyard, to be very honest with you. And I have personally offered to plant plants up to the crest of the hill. And they won't allow me to do that, they won't let me do that. I've asked for a fence to be put up, some sort of a privacy fence, a block, something. And you can't ask the police to do it because they, they don't have any, you know. We have truckers sitting up there disrespecting our police station. When they go up and they ask them to move, they look at them and say, no. I mean, that's, it's just ridiculous. So I guess maybe we could continue on to the ordinance that we've already started, that was tabled all those years ago. Sixteen years have gone by, I've been living. And, you know, everybody says, well, go ahead and move. Now I have to tell the new guy that you got trucks running all night.
Where do they use the restroom? Do they leave to?
Well, I don't know where they use the restroom. When they, when they pull in, they usually pull in and leave their truck running, their truck running, and their refrigeration unit running, which I understand.
They have, right.
They have to.
You said they, how many trucks will you have?
On a Sunday night, anywhere from two to three. They usually pull in about four, between four and six PM, and they run until seven or eight AM the next morning. Tuesdays and Thursdays are popular days. It could be any time, really. Just last night, was it last night or the night before last? One pulled in, backed in at midnight. Lights, what is lights shining on our homes the entire night with the truck running and the refrigeration unit running? You know, there, there's no one there, there's no one there, they're using this place as a truck stop.
And then they leave and go somewhere else?
Some of them do unhook, some of them get somebody to pick them up and leave the truck sitting there running and then they leave. Some of them park between the two buildings, which in my estimation, I'm not a fire person, but if a fire truck has to get in there for something, they're not, they can't. So that's probably my five minutes.
This is the ordinance twelve dash oh five, right? That was tabled, okay.
It was tabled on the third reading? Is that, is it in the minutes in here as to why they tabled it?
Was actually, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Nope, go ahead Victor, your name's in here.
There were two reasons the ordinance was tabled. First of all, Mayor Grogan at the time was supposed to talk to the owner of Giant Eagle to see if they could use that, would be the south end of their lot to park trucks. I don't know if that ever occurred. Secondly, I was told by the law director at that time, who unfortunately is a seessail, that the planning commission would have to entertain rezoning that property. And that's two of the reasons why the ordinance was tabled. The other thing I wanna know, and I don't know if you got asked about this, is who okayed the road to go down to that, the road in that lot? There's a road coming out.
Right, from DiStefano Insurance? Yeah.
Who okayed that road?
City Council and Planning Commission?
Isn't that next to her property, doesn't she have to ask you about an easement or approve an easement to that?
No, I, I think we were all part of the negotiation process there on the, on the property and the transfer.
Does those trucks have access to use that?
No, that's only for DiStefano Insurance.
And roughly two people a day use it. A red car and a black car.
The other thing, Mayor is, George is deceased and you don't wanna speak ill about the dead, and I don't think Donna's doing that. But I don't know if Jeff is easier to get along with or not. I don't know Jeff personally, I've met him a couple of times. But you would figure a longstanding business in this community would want to be flexible or a planning commission would do something to rezon it. Now, I know the people on planning commission have been there a long time and maybe they're friends with them, Mazericks. I don't know the answer to that. But I will tell you this, prior to where I live now on Redwood, I lived on Bruce Street, which is off of Colonial. And at my house, which is much further than their houses are, I could hear trucks. So it is a problem.
You can imagine how they're right across the backyard.
It is annoying.
Alright, excuse me.
I can ask a few questions. I'm Tim Hoy, I live at 525 Erickson Drive, which is right at the bottom of the hill there from Canal Fulton Village. My questions are this, he has an industrial zoning privilege, which means he can operate twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Okay, what is his business with those trucks?
Basically, when, Mr. Philmuth may be able to correct me on this, but my understanding is that when you have an industrial zoning, it's a twenty-four hour a day operation. Whether you or not you choose to operate under those hours, you have the right to.
His business with those trucks is to either load them or unload them.
Correct.
Am I correct?
Right.
And that only happens when they back up to a dock. So he's not really performing any business with those trucks until those back doors open and they're up against the dock.
I think the way you can look at it is, if I have a liquor permit in my establishment, I can choose to sell liquor or I can choose not to sell liquor, I can just hold on to it. He has the right to, to, I mean, he holds that, that right to do that, I mean, just to.
To operate a truck stop.
Through that, through that zoning, through the industrial part of it.
Just to let those trucks sit there and run all night. But yet we won't allow the garbage trucks until five or six thirty in the morning.
Right.
That's interesting.
So the business that he.
But the difference for the rest, the garbage trucks, Tim, is they're, that's the restriction we put on them to operate on residential streets.
Sure.
Okay.
But what I'm saying, his business with these trucks is to either load or unload. He's not performing that business.
Correct.
So my question would be to the truckers, what business do you have here? Because it's not being performed.
And that's what it goes back to, it's not necessarily that the business is being performed at that time, they have the right to. And that's considered part of their business operation.
Even though they're outside vendors and they have no, they're not under his employment? They're not his employees?
Right, but they're part of his business.
No, they're part of someone else's business.
They're not delivering there?
Yes, they are delivering.
That's what they're doing, delivering, but that could say it's that they're not really performing that business until six thirty in the morning.
Right.
So, you know, like I said, I would knock on the window of the trucker and say, what business do you have here? Well, I'm, I'm getting unloaded. I know you're not, you have no business here until six thirty in the morning.
So they don't allow, they, one of the employees of the meat place comes in.
No.
Who opens the door and lets them go and do their thing with what they bring in the trucks?
They don't come in until six thirty.
Yeah.
They don't come till six thirty.
They're closed all night.
Right, but somebody from the meat place comes and lets them bring in or take out at that time.
Yep, yep.
Six thirty in the morning.
They'll pull in at four o'clock on Sunday afternoon.
Okay.
Twelve ten, twelve ten, Sunday morning, and I called this one in.
Twelve ten?
Twelve ten.
PM.
PM.
In the afternoon.
In the AM.
Oh, Sunday.
AM.
AM.
Oh, Saturday night, Sunday morning.
Very early Sunday morning, a refrigeration unit kicked on. I went up there, it was one of Jeff's trucks, I guess. All the doors were open, all his trucks, all open, nothing in them. The refrigerator unit is running. Why? I called it in, the officer came up, he said he was gonna knock on doors, he said, well, obviously there's somebody here.
There was nobody there?
There was no one there.
He left a truck running?
Yeah.
Refrigeration unit running. Doors open, nothing in.
It seems like every time I call and complain, I'm always called to complain. The next day or two, there is, there are own trucks up there running, just.
Retaliate.
Can arrive at what you wanna arrive there.
Would a wall won't solid, but would it help?
It would have to be on the crest of the hill of his property. And that's the other thing, you know, when he, when Mrs. Farnsworth passed away and he purchased that second plaza there, it, as far as I know still, is zone B2, yet the trucks are there still twenty-four hours a day in that long. Well, he took the woods down, so he in essence took the buffer between his property and our property and never replaced that. The trees that you see there are on my property. So at the very least, I feel like he should be required to at least put some sort of a buffer up for the residents.
So when he cut those down, we had started complaining. Actually, when I cut them down, opened it up.
Yeah.
Like I'll fix you all.
So a noise complaint isn't enforceable because it's zoned industrial, is that correct?
Actually, it's not zoned industrial. That was, it was zoned industrial while it was in the township. We annexed it and it's B2 zoning for us, but his grandfather did because he was an industrial use coming in. As long as he continues to use that industrially, he's entitled to keep using it that way unless, until it stops.
Is he using it industrial?
No.
As long as he's.
If there's trucks coming in, it is industrial use, so yeah, as long as he's doing that.
You need to classify what planning commission, what is zoned industrial and what should be classified as own business.
It's a pre-existing, non-conforming use, that's what it is.
But you can amend it, we just did this in Sugar Creek with the company I worked for. Land was on industrial for sixty years by an office guy, it was rezoned B1. So there's precedent to it.
Against his will?
Huh?
Against his will?
Basically, what happened was we wanted to build an office building and it was zoned industrial and we had to get it rezoned. Well, they contested it, but their, well, the township trustees there overrode that and they rezoned it B1. I don't know if that would apply here, but if you don't classify what an industrial business is in a city, then you're setting yourself up for what you're dealing with now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the city's only gonna get bigger. I mean, we've already gotten a tremendous amount of commerce here. And the more commerce that comes into the city, the more of a problem we're gonna have with this. I mean, there's already trucks lined up, you know, the road to Avalon, they're sitting across the street at the Giant Eagle. They're sitting in the vacant lot at the Burger King. I mean, it's only gonna get worse.
Over at the church too.
Isn't there an ordinance that prohibits you from having an idling vehicle on occupied?
There are ordinances against even just having idling vehicles more than five minutes at a time.
But they're not enforceable?
Not in this case, because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
So it's something we'd have to.
So we're asking for help.
What if there's something in the ORC?
Pre-existing, non-conforming use.
Is, is the.
Basically, what it boils down to is it's a slaughterhouse. And as long as they process one deer a year, then that's continuing their grandfather use, so.
How much of a inconvenience would it be for the meat company to analyze their business and possibly be helping in some way? I mean, is it a matter of, I don't care and it's gonna be what it is? Or, you know, I mean, is there, there's no way of coming together and working on something?
Initiate mediation between the business owner and property. I know Chief Schwartz, you've been there and passed.
I think she passed out that you guys already tried this.
No time.
That's.
I was told, I, yeah, well, I was told that they don't like troublemakers, this is a small town. And if he really, if I'm really upset with the noise that he's making now, he'll start slaughtering pigs again and see how I like that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not us that don't like troublemakers, I mean, we'd like to resolve it, but.
We like us.
And he was very uncooperative, to say the least.
We have not initiated this in quite some time, not since Victor was on council before my time.
No, we have initiated it through Joe Gold personally.
Oh, you have?
We have.
What's, what's the results?
Like I said, you know, it's, it's a dispatching issue.
You initiated something. What did you initiate? Because you're the one, and rightfully so, that always is talking about a good business climate in town. If you have a 50-year-old business here, to quite honestly, and I'll admit it, I go there regularly. I could boycott it. If he doesn't want business from in town, this is a good way to discourage it. You know, you're the mayor, you're the face of the city. What are you doing to take steps to resolve the issue? Because you're, generally, you're pretty good at that.
I've met with him, and once again, it's, you know, what I shared with them is the dispatchers dispatch, dispatch the trucks, and they tell them to go to this address. And the dispatchers in the past have tried to say, please don't arrive at the property between these hours, and if you do, park someplace else. And that has worked at times. And then, like I said, it kind of loses its effect, and now we're back to this relation. What's that?
Call the dispatcher again.
Well, that's hard to do by.
No, I was in trucking for a lot of years.
If they own the plaza, they could very easily, because it's their property, they could very easily post signs, no trucking, parking between the hours of this and this.
Or could they block it off so they can't get in to a given time?
Well, that's, 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 the people that, they're owned the plaza, right? So they're not gonna do that. I mean, that's, that's.
They could do that, though.
They can, but they're not going to.
Okay, well, then that's where the mayor's.
This is, this is a longstanding dispute, so we've.
So in the name of progress, we just let Mazericks do what they want to do, when they want to do it?
Well, we allow them to operate within the law. That's, that's, I mean, it's.
You don't think there are other cities in this country that have imposed no idling laws?
I don't know if they have those no idling laws in industrial zones.
Yes, they do. I'll send you examples.
Sure. Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
We're, we're in the process of implementing our zoning code as it is, so that would be something I'd like to see.
Just so she can't even have any.
I think that'd be a good question to start.
It echoes through the cul-de-sac.
What's your name?
Mike Tera, I live at 2028 Bird. And, yeah, same thing. It's, it echoes straight through the cul-de-sac. You know, I moved here for my, so I'm gonna get away from that kind of stuff. And besides that, I mean, aside of that, we love the city, but yeah, it's, I paid a lot of money to live here.
Truck stop's only seven miles away. And I'm sure a truck driver would deal with truck stops, time schedules. When this one opens and when that one's closed.
It's got amenities there.
I'll see what I can do. I'll make another visit.
Truckers outside of their trucks urinating in my shrubbery, I'm sure.
So I could fence, they'll do that. And you talk about a wall, it's gonna take more than just a six-foot white fence.
I just read, can't just have a lit fence. I read that.
So I spotted a wall.
Yeah. There we go. That'll break up the meeting. All right. I will visit the owner and see what I can find out and see if we can.
When you're up there visiting, why don't you visit the, the dirty area that is around it? The breeze blows out all the time.
All right. Thank you very much.
So what, what will we, like, best?
What can we expect?
I would, I would expect I'll have a conversation with the owner and report back to you.
Want me to tell you what to expect?
I think, I think I.
I just had a conversation the other day, so.
I think I told you like six months ago, I'm not going away.
Yeah.
So there's absolutely zero way to do anything about this, no rezoning, no nothing.
I think there might, we're gonna explore different avenues.
There's gotta be, that's ridiculous. Sixteen years?
Well, you know, I wanted to build on the property there by moving to DiStefano, but I got, I got ran out. And so I started building a Burger King injection township.
Okay. I was gonna say, I mean, talking about pleasing business owners, I mean, we have a good business owner here that's always taking care of us.
Exactly.
And I have to be very careful in this town because I have a lot of valuable, loyal customers here. You know, I don't, I, I can't, I can't kick the business too much.
You're okay.
And I even, you know, I even work, I work for the city. I do things for the city, and I enjoy living here. I really like it here, or else I would have moved a long time ago.
All right. I'll get back to you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
Yeah, I got something.
Yes, sir, Chief.
I have this question that I brought up on a gentleman, Ray Green 1165 South Oakley Street. From the meeting minutes of February 5th, where council was discussing the fire district meeting that they had at the safety center, paragraph, State Secretary Mr. Cozy had that in the past, we had a chief. He thinks the reason it didn't work was because there was no provision there for the trustees or council to work together.